Charlene LaVoy, Mr. and Mrs.?
Adam is excused, absent and excused, and Scott is absent, and John Cooney is absent and excused.
Wow.
Loud tonight.
Got it. Lot of flu going around. Everybody's sick.
We have a, we're gonna see Jan Perry and Charlene tonight. And agenda review, does anybody have anything? You're seated, I see that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
No, so is there any public comment that doesn't pertain to anything on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to the first public hearing. PZC 25-16, applicant Elizabeth Durham, location 93 Wetmore Avenue, Zone T, Town Center, single-family proposal, special permit application for home occupation, section 415-45.
Chairman, not an answer. Pat Renzullo for my daughter Elizabeth and her husband, Dwayne.
Have a seat.
Patsey, sit, Patsey, sit down.
No, no, I take a lot of the younger people, you know.
We're giving you, we're giving you a chance to rest there.
Well, first of all, I appreciate all your volunteer work. It's been a lot of years since I was on board, over forty years ago, when I was chairman. So I know some of the work you do, and I'm glad for it, you volunteered. Anyway, I'm here to help answer any questions you might have, saying, of course, Elizabeth and her husband. I'm here to do that as well.
You wanna explain to us what's going on?
I'll let Elizabeth do that, I'm gonna tell her what the application's about.
We just wanted to make sure we did everything the right way. I don't know if it's overkill or not, but we're starting a home, a business, a lawn care service business, and it's just gonna be run from our house.
All right, I read the letter that you sent on November 20th, 2025.
Yeah.
And it states in here that, let's see, the application is corrected, so do we have a corrected application? Several times it mentions corrected application. So was that submitted to the, to the people?
The intention was that that letter is attached to the application, so that's the correction there, that was my intention. But I can, I can update the actual application.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, in the record, we've got a letter stating that, you know, that these changes are made, I think that's acceptable. And I think if, if you get to a point of making a motion, you just reference the letter that was submitted.
Okay.
With the date.
So we have, let's see, so you're only going to have immediate members of your family?
Right.
So how many people are living in that house?
There's five people.
Five people? Are they your kids or something?
Yes.
They are?
Yeah.
Okay.
They all love to work?
Yeah, they are.
They're part of the team now?
Will they work is a different question.
Yeah.
Maybe at some, at some points, yes.
Always.
So, there's some issues about the driveway. It seems like, you know, I've driven by several times, and there's been multiple cars in the driveway, some of them have been in the street and everything.
Not our road, it's ours. Not the street, not our house. You sure you're at the right house?
Special English's house?
Yeah.
I got the right house.
There's two cars in there, her car and my car. And that's it.
Well, earlier, a few months ago, there was another car.
Yeah, it was, but it's gone, yeah, there's only two cars, our car, my car.
I too go by there every day.
All right. So, you're gonna have a trailer with the equipment on it? Oh, Scott's present. Taking over for John.
Maybe, Sean.
All right. Mr. Renzullo, how are you? So you're gonna park the trailer in the garage?
Yeah.
So then you're gonna have cars parked, at least one car parked outside, then?
Yeah, it was a two-car garage.
Two-car garage.
I mean, it's a two-car driveway.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
And you're gonna have a truck to pull the trailer?
No, I got my vehicle.
All right. So you talked about in your application, restoring stuff in the shed in back? You're not gonna do that now?
Yeah, for work stuff, I don't know what. The only thing in there right now is just lawn furniture, you know, and I'm not gonna store anything that I don't have proof of work.
This business is seasonal, I'm sure it's just gonna be seasonal equipment. In the summer times, we'll leave some things in there, in the winter, we'll take them back out, and pretty much.
Yeah, we got some hours, and then we'll go, and it's all hard.
Did you, did you submit this with the pictures on it and so forth? So it shows cars parked on the, the grass on the lawn?
That was a month, a couple months ago.
He's gone.
Okay. But I mean, is it, is it, will, I mean, I guess, I think where I heard really going is that there's gonna be more equipment, and will it prevent parking on the driveway and not necessitate parking on the lawn?
I don't plan on going big and getting stuff that I don't need. If anything, it's gonna be one more 48 on the trailer, back to trailer, into the garage, and hook it, and then you got the two cars. I'm not gonna get any big pieces of equipment.
Okay, well, these look like just regular passenger cars that are parked on the lawn.
Right, they're no longer, they're no longer.
They're no longer.
Mm-hmm.
So if you've got two passenger cars in the pictures, and you said you gotta truck them to pull the trailer?
I have an SUV.
SUV.
Yeah, parked there in one of the pictures.
Right, the silver, yeah.
Silver SUV.
Yeah.
That's the one. That's my car, and the gray car's yours.
I guess the question is, I think, is, but if you have more people living there, and you also have a business, where's there gonna be parking for everyone? It looks like they're on the lawn here, and.
Well, I don't have anybody staying with us, that was just a one-time deal, you know, it's just me, Elizabeth, and our three kids.
Well, and I think, can you tell me what kind of trailer you're talking about? Because I think even without a business, you could have cars and trailers as a, as a residence.
Yeah.
So you're talking about a big landscape trailer, or what size trailer?
No, about maybe a 12-footer, like, no bigger than that, just enough to fit two 48s, scat.
Like a big stake bed.
What's that?
Like a big stake bed.
Uh, like, it's tiny, get a tractor supply.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they could always park at my office, which is about two miles away or less, and that has plenty of space.
Additional commercial space.
So they can park anything they want there anytime.
Any questions?
Nope. You've asked all the things I had.
Jan, is there anything?
No.
No, I think the only thing, it doesn't seem like you're gonna do any staff filing outside right now.
No, I don't plan on bringing anything to my house, I'm on a pace.
So it's gonna look like a normal residence, you're gonna, like, it would be just, you're gonna get up and.
If you drove by tomorrow, that's what it's gonna look like.
Yeah. It's not gonna look any different.
There's gonna be nothing out on the lawn. We live on the corner, so I don't like the house to look decent, I don't need a whole bunch of crap, you know, just everywhere.
I think that, I think that's what we're getting at, right? You got it, right.
It is.
So, I don't know if I can ask you, has this been addressed?
Okay, yes, yeah, this, this addresses all those concerns.
So, you know, the, what's gonna bother us a little bit is the pictures parking on the lawn. It's obvious that, you know, you've done it previously, took pictures of it, which is bad.
Well, we had a deal, but we had the guy there, we had a roommate, or my daughter's boyfriend lived there, he had cars, but since he moved out, there's two cars there. I mean, there's been two cars there for the past couple of months.
Those are the only two cars they have.
Yeah, there's only two to drive.
So, if you got, I guess the, the real sticky point is, you know, the car parking. You gotta have your kids working for you. They're gonna have cars, and, you know, the special permit to occupy this, and it's, you know, the area where your, where your vehicles are shown is very well worn in, so that parking was going on for quite a while.
Well, it's also underneath the tree, right? The maple tree?
Yeah, and you killed the grass, it's gonna go bad.
So you just walk three times, and it's going light. So if you didn't have a business, you had a bunch of cars, and they're driving in the grass, that's fine?
No.
Because, you know, I mean.
No, you're not supposed to, you're not supposed to park on the grass.
No, you should save it up here next door neighbor's day. You got cars and trailers everywhere on their side.
Jeff will go take care of that later, but right now, we're talking about you.
Well, I'm trying to make a business, trying to do something for Woodstead, you know, being on a business, driveway shouldn't be an issue.
So are you operating this business now?
What's that?
Are you operating this business now?
No.
No?
I'm just waiting for all this to get done, so we can actually do it.
Oh, okay.
Very honest business person.
Yeah.
Scott, you have anything else to add to it?
No. I don't see a reason to say no. I think we should probably work with our zoning enforcement to see what he doesn't wanna see in the future.
Mm-hmm.
As conditions of approval. Because there's everybody, a lot of people wants to have the smaller trailers like he's talking about, and.
Right.
I'm, I'm glad he came in.
I mean, I looked outside the trailer outside my window, that the next-door neighbor's just sitting there for months, and actually years, just rotting away, but then, you know, it's like, that's right outside my bedroom window, along with his four other cars, they don't even move.
We're just trying to concentrate on you.
I don't, I mean, it's just a little thing.
But I, I think, you know, if they're using their personal vehicles for landscaping, they, you know, could have a trailer for their own personal use. I think what we would wanna look at is to make sure that we don't have a lot of commercial vehicles, right? Make sure we don't have two personal vehicles plus five work trucks plus two trai, you know, if, if it's beyond what a normal residence would be, you know, I think that's where we, we get into it. So I was just pulling up to see if we have a, a regulation on the number of commercial vehicles, and it doesn't sound like you're gonna have any commercial vehicles, right? You're gonna have all, they're gonna be your residential cars.
Yeah, there's not, yeah.
That the trailer may be registered commercial, but we're, I don't think we're talking about a lot of commercial vehicles, so I, I'm not overly concerned.
Just comments from you?
Well, I'd like to make sure that there's no extra parking on the lawn, you know, keep an eye on that and your neighbor's.
Yeah.
But, you know, whatever conditions you guys feel comfortable setting, we'll make sure.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
We, we have somebody online. When we get to pu, when we get to public comments, we'll make sure that everybody in the public gets heard.
That was a little frightening. What was?
That's a first.
Yeah, really. How did we get that?
Is that coming through?
It's coming through, yeah. We had somebody request to, to sign in online. So when we, when we get to the public comment section, I was gonna draw your attention to that, make sure that they had an opportunity to speak, we just haven't gotten there yet. The, Mr. Chairman, the one thing that I would just say, and it's not even caution, but think about, is growth of the business. A lot of landscapers eventually wanna, like, snowplow and stuff like that in the winter. So that's just one thing that we'll wanna make sure stays under control.
I've snowplowed for a company for 20 years, I don't want nothing to do with snow.
Got it. Okay, so that's a good, that's a good answer.
I'm not planning on, like, getting rid, I just, I'm sick of working for somebody else, I wanna have enough for me to keep busy through the week, make money, and, you know, maybe even hire my son, and that's about it, you know, just me and one other guy, me and him, that's it. I'm not trying to get rich off of anything, I just, I'm sick of working for somebody else. That's pretty much all it is.
Trying to feed three kids.
Yeah, well.
This is the right regulation.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So it just says, "Any equipment used in association shall be customarily incidental to the residential use." I think we'll just wanna make sure that that stays the same.
So is there some, I mean, I, somewhere in the back of my mind, Jeff, is coming up that, you're not, you're supposed to park in your driveway, it's not on the lawn, so is that?
You're correct, yeah. It, it's scattered throughout the regulations.
This is really secondary to what they're in here for, but if it leads to them having to park on their, you know, make a parking lot out of their lawn.
Yeah, that would be a separate violation.
That's a no-no. Right, okay. And should we address that in, in this approval, or?
I don't think it hurts to make sure you put the condition in the approval.
We should address that.
Yeah.
It's a concern for most people.
Okay.
Yeah, but, I mean, if it, if it was a regular residence, and they had a couple kids with cars, and they had to park in the street, as long as it wasn't a parking ban, we wouldn't regulate it?
No, just on the lawn.
Yeah, it's not how many they have, it's whether they're parking on the, the grass, the lawn, using the lawn as a dr, a driveway or a parking lot.
So if we dig up some of our lawn and put down peace stones, then it's another driveway?
You can't do that without a permit. You can't, you can't put a driveway in without a permit. You know.
We already have one. Well, we can't.
You can't expand it without a permit.
You can't expand it without, yes, right.
We worked long and hard on the driveway permit.
Took us two, two years to get driveway regulations done.
We have a commercial lot, like, short distance away.
And that's, that's a whole nother thing when you do that.
Okay, they can put anything on my lot, which is commercially zoned.
Odds are, they do have room for a bigger driveway, we would need the application in to review it.
Sure.
It's not just the expansion of the driveway, but also a possible expansion of the impervious surface coverage on the lot, so there's, there's all sorts of different things to.
Yeah, we're out at the lake.
Need that SFA. But I think the property's probably big enough to.
It's funny, yeah. It's, it's plenty big.
Yeah, I don't want to even do that.
It's fair.
I don't need any more payment or anything.
Something else to plow.
I wanna keep it just like it is, you know, it's all.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, can we open up the participants? The public?
I know we have somebody online, I don't know if there's anybody in the room, if you wanna take the online folks first, however you wanna do it.
Anybody out there that wanna say something? Nope, okay.
Okay. James and Ginger?
Hey, thank you for allowing us to join virtually. We are in the house across Oak Street from 93 Wetmore, and actually had a lot of the same sorts of questions about parking, and so I won't go over that. I did just wanna ask, if I could, some other questions that came to mind. Is this the right format to do that, or just wanna be respectful of the process?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. And I think that, I understand from the materials, the business is a landscaping business, and so there's gonna be mowers. I used to work years ago for one at Woodstead Scott's Landscaping, and I know that a lot of time and energy goes into keeping those things running for repair work. Is, is that gonna be taking place on the premises, any sort of repair work and, and the like, there, and, you know, testing the engines and revving the engines and that sort of thing? Because we have young kids who recently awakened and the like.
Well, I mean, it wouldn't be anymore to me mowing the lawn, or anybody else mowing the lawn, if the lawn takes me two hours to mow, there's not gonna be, that's just me doing my own lawn, so there's, I, I'm gonna.
So you're not gonna do the maintenance on-site?
What, what kind of maintenance?
Equipment ma, maintenance.
Like sharpen the blades? I would do that in my garage, like a bench.
Well, I'm just, you weren't, were asking, he said.
I mean, oil changes and blades and stuff, I mean, everybody does that on their own.
Even homeowners.
Yeah.
Hi, this is, this is Ginger Walter, sorry. I think, we were just thinking that a, a business could scale up, right, if you're very successful, to need bigger equipment, or more lawn mowers, or bigger machines, let's say, where you might have a couple of employees who were, you know, grinding things, or, you know, saws, or, I, I don't know, whatever it might be. So we were just inquiring about what that might sound like, or what your plans for expansion or equipment might be, like, commercial equipment, or, you know, something bigger.
Yeah, we're not, we're not intending to, to grow the business there. If, if there's any expansion, it's not gonna be on-site.
Yeah. They have no employees coming to the house.
We're not gonna get any, any additional equipment except a trailer, which can go in the garage. Everything else, we already have.
Gotcha, okay. And I saw in the material for this hearing, the, there's a potential to, to expand the shed. I was, I was a little surprised that all the equipment that would fit in that shed, the fact unless there's a shed on the other side of the house that you can't see, but the shed that's closest to the, to the wood fence is the one I'm thinking of. You could fit all that equipment in that shed now?
Uh, there's, no, because I, I mean, I don't even, I have a, I have one 48, one big blower, and a backpack, and that all fits in the garage. The only thing in the shed is a recycling can, a garbage can, some cans, and some lawn furniture. And she was talking about just putting it in the, in the shed, there'd probably just handle, rakes, shovels, gas cans, that type of stuff, like, not actual big power equipment type things in that shed, the shed's not big enough. And I don't wanna.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that sounds great.
So, okay, are you done?
There's only one other question I have, if they're, if they're, like, it's a little hard to hear, so apologies if I'm interrupting anybody, but, all right, one other question, which is, are the, in the proposal for what you're, for the zoning board to, to do, it talked about deliveries, is that gonna be like packages, or like mulch, and things, things of that sort for the business?
I think, like, we just went overboard with this, whenever we got here, because, like, I'm not having mulch, I'm not having anything delivered to the house. Anything that I do is gonna go right to the, to whoever my customer is. If I'm getting mulch for a customer, it's gonna have it delivered to that house. So the only packages that we get are from Amazon, or something like that.
Yeah.
No stone, no, nothing, there's nothing that's coming to the house, because, like I say, I don't need all that stuff looking like crap, you know, in my house.
Yeah, no, thank you, it's, it's a little hard to hear earlier on, so apologies for, for any redundancy with what was already covered. Ginger, that's, that's all of my questions, do you have anything else?
Yeah, um, the only other question I, I was thinking about is, I know, even when our kids have played outside, people slow down and wonder, like, wave to them, and traffic will back up up Oak Street, and we were just, we're not sure the scale, or I wasn't sure, I guess, you might have said so in the materials, the scale, or how much you're going to scale with the business, like, if it's really successful? Would you have employees that would come and, like, park on the side of the road near the stop sign, or how would that work?
No, if we got too big, we would relocate.
Right, yeah.
We'd have to rent the garage, but that's not our plans.
Gotcha.
Is that accurate? In other words, if they became a larger commercial operation, could they still operate under this permit at their home?
No, they're not allowed to have off-site employees, or not non-resident employees, they're not allowed to have. And storage of materials, that's part, that's part of the reason for the, the memo that they provided with all the revisions was.
Saying, wanting you to answer that for this purpose.
Yeah, yeah.
One last question from James, if, if there is any need for recourse, do we come back to, from a process standpoint, do we come back and, and, and talk to you guys, or is there a different process? What, what happens if we have concerns?
You could see a zoning.
You come to the building, you come to our building department, the building inspector.
Zoning enforcement officer.
Yeah, the zoning enforcement, police, the same person.
I always recommend talking to your neighbor first.
Yeah.
Right, right.
If this is the neighbor that lives across the street, he's over there. So I talked to Mr. Eric Dave, Mr. White Glove, the White Glove Landscaping, I talked to the Allen Street people, if it's the same people that live on the, on Oak Street, we, we barely ever see them, because they live in a different state. If this is the people, you can't really talk to somebody that's not there, you don't know their.
Oh, no, no, you're, no, he's right, and we do live currently out of state, but we're considering relocating to this family house.
Yeah, we had that memo before about talk to your neighbors, and I did, and, you know, like I said, she said he lived in a state.
Yeah, apologies, we weren't, we weren't available, when we might have tried.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we, I, I don't anticipate any problem here, I just wanted to figure out the, the process, I have some questions, so thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. Can we say something now, or it's only?
Sure.
Okay, so on the, on the stockpiling of materials, it's, what's addressed here for storage is like equipment and so forth, but what about, like, you know, piles of rock, or piles of mulch, or piles?
We should just say no stockpiling of landscape material on-site.
Okay.
Put it at Patsey's place.
Well, this letter here.
I saw that, but it doesn't really, it doesn't go, it really, it's kind of a, not directly clear about landscaping materials, so that.
There's two pieces to that, and Rista had the regulation open in front of her, she read it, right? It's, you, the idea is that it looks like a residence, it is a residence, and it continues to look like that. So if, if we started to see stockpiling of materials, or stone getting dropped off, there's mulch, that's clearly a violation of the regulation, and therefore a violation of their special.
So without, without stipulating it in the approval, or making it a condition of approval?
Yeah, I don't think you have to, it's never a bad idea, belt and suspenders approach, doesn't it?
Okay. Okay.
Well, and I would just say, maybe instead of making it a condition, we make the approval upon the application, and specifically reference this letter, which says.
It doesn't say landscape materials, so it says all materials, equipment, and records. Yeah, I know, all materials, I know.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Yeah, and you, and you do wanna think about the fact that this is a special permit, so it gets filed on the land records, and it's on that property forever.
Mm-hmm.
So a hundred years from now, somebody could be running a landscape business there.
Mm-hmm. And I, and I see, yes, I agree, referencing the November, putting that in the approval, the November 20th letter. If you, if we think it covers landscape materials, I'm okay with that.
Does it say landscape?
No, it says materials.
Or a landscaping business.
Yeah, I'm just thinking gray area for the zoning official, if it says no stockpiling instantly.
Yeah, it says all materials, equipment, and records will be stored.
We could, we could put it in a condition of approval.
Well, I would like to clarify, it's not a landscaping business, it's a lawn care business.
Oh, yeah, it's a lawn service, that's totally different than what you guys are thinking. Like, I'm not bringing in loaders, I don't want a lot of.
Well, you could get, you could, all of a sudden, next year, your business could explode, and then we need to.
Not my plan, I, I'm gonna take what I can get.
You hope not, but.
I, I've been doing it since 95, so I, I know what my, my plan is to do, you know, and I don't want, I'm not, I'm 50 years old, I'm not gonna try to do crazy and heavy lifting things, I just wanna ease out.
Well, you're right, your application says our home-based lawn care business.
Yeah. Which is different, it, it's almost, it's, the equipment is sometimes is the same, but it's different, you know, it's like, I, like, the landscape, or, yeah, landscape, you know, they got loaders and all this stuff for rocks, and I'm not doing anything hardscaping, it's all whatever's alive, you know, mowing, edging.
Just, just mowing, just maintenance, mowing, trimming.
Yeah, mowing, yeah, yeah, maintenance.
And I think that, you know, back to the regulation, it already, you know, it says And I think that, you know, back to the regulation, it already, you know, it says, any equipment used and association shall be customary and incidental to the residential use. You know, lawn care equipment, I think would fall into that category.
I agree.
Yeah.
It's, it's just, I think we were, Scott and I were stuck on the materials part without the qualifier of landscape materials, but if it, you, you would say that encompasses that?
Well, and if they start to get large stockpiles, I mean, if I wanted to get a load of mulch delivered to my house, I could...
Which we do, right? We all do.
Yeah, I was actually gonna ask somebody, like, I don't know how...
We all do that.
Yeah, so, but if I started to get multiple, multiple, like, and stone, now, I think you could look at the, the regulation, that it's changed the residential character.
Or if the same pile sits there for more than a month, you know, it's like...
Well, there's homeowners that do that, too, but it's, it's, if it's more than what would be expected for the residential property.
And I, so I think that our regulations themselves protect against a lot of what's going on, and I think it's pretty spelled out in this application. Of whether or not, you know, the trailers and equipment will be, uh, stored on the property, they'll be stored indoors, they'll have the materials and equipment stored.
So, do you, uh, spread fertilizer, too?
Do I?
Yeah.
By having at this house, I'd spread fertilizer, I'm gonna have...
I mean, on your customers, do you fertilize their lawns, or...
Well, when I worked for, uh, the previous...
Your business you were talking about right now, do you fertilize?
I wasn't, I'm not planning on fertilizing, but I do have a pesticide license.
Okay, I have to bring you to another question.
I could spread if I wanted to, but it's not something that I was looking into, you know?
What about...
If the customer wants it done, they could hire TruGreen, or Kevon, or whoever.
So, I would just like bringing up the thoughts of storing fertilizer and pesticides in the house for your business.
No, no, we got cats, we got kids, you know? Eighty-three surprise most cocked things that we have, you know? But yeah, nothing like, nothing pesticide-y.
So, you're bringing up just saying, you know, all, your maintenance or your, your equipment's gonna be done inside the garage?
Yeah.
And you don't, you're not gonna spread pesticides, even though you have a license?
Yeah.
And you don't fertilize, you just mow?
Mow, blow, and rebag, edge, it's, and all the common stuff that, you know, you get in the pesticide, that's kind of a different thing, you know? If, like, you screw someone's lawn up, then that's not good at all with fertilizer.
So, we're, I guess our concerns are, one, the cars parking on the lawn, equipment being stored outside, you're gonna, you're gonna store it inside. Um, the original plan said you were going to use the shed, but now in your letter says you're not going to use the shed, correct?
Yeah, yeah, the shed's got garbage cans.
The shed's not gonna be part of your business?
Yeah, no.
So, everything's gonna be based out of your garage?
Yeah, just out of the garage.
Anybody else have any concerns, comments, Peter?
Nope.
You good, Scott? Everybody's good, Charlene, Rista?
Yeah.
Alright, so...
Make a motion to close PCC twenty-five dash sixteen, public hearing.
Second.
Okay.
We haven't voted.
Oh, we gotta vote on closing the public hearing. Any comment on closing the public hearing? No? All in favor?
Aye.
And then, then we go on to PZ dash twenty-five dash seventeen.
So, we'll move on to another public hearing, and then we'll move on to discussion of the applications.
So, why is it that...
Hang tight, we'll get fifteen minutes.
We have another public hearing before we can just make any...
Don't go anywhere, stay in the room.
Okay, we're gonna start public hearing for PZ twenty-five dash seventeen, application Paul Mitchell, location one sixty-one Meadow Street. Zone town gateway, propose a special permit application for vehicles, sales, and service, personal auto detailing.
Hello, everybody.
Tell us what you want to do, sir.
Okay, I'm representing the, the business owner on the builder, the building, and, um, they're gonna open a, uh, auto detailing facility. And it's, it's strictly, um, detailing cars, hand washing, in the building, and, um, and that's basically the service, it's very, it's a very simple, uh, business. I wish I could, uh, dress it up a little bit more for you, but I cannot. So, excuse me there. Um, I, I believe with the sales and service, that was, uh, not to add any confusion, but that was to fit into your pre-designed classifications that they had within the town.
So, there's really no plan to sell vehicles?
No, no, he has in his paperwork here, um, his mission statement, and they are...
But on the page you're looking at right now, that front page, it says vehicle showroom. What does, what does that mean?
So, they, they collect cars and things like that, like, um, they have, like, um, like, one, actually, they have two, uh, nice cars, and, and after they detail a car, they'll take pictures of it and things like that. The, the building and the interior is very, um, overdone for a shop, like visually.
We've seen.
Yeah.
It's gorgeous.
It's a gorgeous building, so that's the idea.
Saw the pictures on Facebook.
Oh, okay, yeah, I know the owner has posted a lot of stuff like that, so, um, that's, that's the intention.
Can we have our party there?
Yeah, oh, I know, the upstairs is fabulous, yeah, downstairs is too, so...
Mm-hmm.
I, I think that's the intention, is basically to wash a car, get it looking good inside the building, and take pictures and things like that. I suppose if, if they're in that classification, if they move to, to, in the future, if they had to sell a car, I don't think, I guess that would fall into, they're allowed to, I suppose, but I'm just kinda speculating, I could lean on Jeremy or Jeff if I wanted.
Well, yeah, well, that's, we're gonna talk about that a little bit, because I, I have a concern about that, but this, this is his time to speak, right?
Yeah, well, and I, I think it was, um, that it, it, there wasn't, the reason for that verbiage is there wasn't a classification for auto detailing. So, that just, that was just like the closest thing that the town officials could...
On that point, would you think, could we consider that a personal service? Instead of connecting it to the auto repair, which is really kind of linked to the state permits?
Right.
So, there's no confusion that we're not anticipating sales, repair, and...
I'd, I'd wanna look at your definition for, for personal service. I think that's more in line with, like, you know, beauty salons and nail, you know, personal service, not so much vehi, this is, this is a vehicle service. I mean, the other thing that we looked at was car wash, those are allowed in the zone as well, also a special permit use.
Wouldn't it fit more under the car wash, then? I mean, they are gonna be washing the car.
They are, but there's, but, you know, it's service as well, right? They're, they're in there, it's going to be a, a car wash, you think of sort of driving through, this is gonna be employees that are there actually working on the vehicle. No, they're not changing oil, they're not doing those types of things, but they'll be, you know, waxing and cleaning and vacuuming and inside the vehicle, they'll be inside the engine probably cleaning up inside there as well.
We had an auto detailing shop in Melissa before.
Yeah.
And car washes do have auto detailing?
I was gonna say, car washes have detailing, and I think... That definition. When, when you looked at it, Jeremy, before initially, why didn't you go with the, I mean, did you find that the definition in the regs didn't encompass what...
For car wash?
Yeah.
Um, why, why did we land there? We landed there because we just felt like it was a better fit, because it was more of a, you know, the vehicle, car washes are in and out typically pretty quickly, you're, you're onsite, the vehicle doesn't get left there, this is gonna be a situation where somebody leaves the vehicle there. So, it's more like a service shop than it is a car wash, which is, you know, you're, you take your car to the car wash, you take it, you wash it, and you leave.
Yeah, if I could add to that, too, um, I think that's, that's a great point. Uh, there's gonna be certainly a, a much less volume of, of vehicles in there, whereas a car wash, like you said, you're gonna have a constant turnaround, where this is a much different type of business, where, where a car may sit there for a day, it could sit there as much, as much as two months. So, really, depending on the, the level of detailing that they, that they do. So, it's not, it doesn't have as many cars sorta in and out.
Not a lot of traffic.
Not a lot of traffic, no, it's a very low-impact business for that neighborhood as well.
But I don't think that would be prevented by the car wash use. The problem is, is that the, the use you're going under allows this.
It does, but, but the application is for this. And if you decide that you don't want car sales over there, you just add that as a condition of approval. I mean, you know, it'll always get tied back to whatever the application is.
Okay.
So, in this case, he's saying it's an auto detailing business. I'll read you the definition for car wash from your reg, it's...
Oh, do, thank you.
A, a building and surrounding area of a lot that provides vehicle washing facilities where there is an employee onsite during all hours of operation, and washing and related cleaning services are not self-service, and are provided by automated washing equipment, including a blower or other mechanical devices, and which may employ some hand labor. So, it doesn't really fit, because we're not talking about automated washing equipment, we're not really talking about a blower, we're talking about hand labor.
Yeah, it does not, the, the, this type of business does not have any of that equipment. All the equipment is by hand, right, and like a hose, and there was like appro, there was appropriate, um, storage tank in the ground before it meets the sewer. And that was all engineered.
So, just, 'cause I'm, I'm getting educated about this, I'm using your time. So, that means like the, the car wash on North Main, where you go and do your own, wash your own, that's specialized, that's not just a hose, that's...
I don't, I haven't been through that one, but I, you know, most of the ones that I, I always use the touchless ones, 'cause I don't want those things touching my paint.
I mean, they have a drive-through, but they also have stalls, you can just go in and wash your own.
Sure, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, that's right, the high-pressure sprays or whatever, right.
So, that's, that's not...
That's kind of a, I, I would say it's probably sort of an accessory use to the car wash that got permitted, right? I mean, at some point, they came in front of the commission and said, here's our car wash, and they had a couple of those self-service paves. But again, high traffic, high turnover, vehicle doesn't get left there, the owner stays with it, the owner does the washing, and then you drive onsite.
So, now, to sell cars, he has to have a motor vehicle permit for that?
To sell, yeah, he'd have to have a dealer's permit from the state, yep.
Yeah, I think that goes like, uh, uh, beyond just like a town approval to sell cars.
Yeah, it takes a DMV.
Well, for service, too.
Dealers and repair services, too.
Which is, I think, I think where I'm kinda getting hung up on that a little bit, not to be difficult, I think that's fine, you know, but...
Gotta go to DMV to get dealers and repair services for that.
You put it for a vehicle service, right? Then they can take that approval, whether that's what they're trying for, not, that's the approval that they've gotten. You go to the state and say, I got approval for service, I wanna become a service station.
Unless we condition it, okay.
That I'm gonna approve service that doesn't offer service. Like, if you're defining service as car washing, I guess...
Well, that's the problem, right?
Yeah.
So, so, I, so what I've done in a different town, but there was a, they did their Rhino on the bottom, and I called it a personal service. So, it was, that's why I suggested that, just it was different, you know? Like, it was a service, but, but, I know that's also a gray area, so I'm not...
I think, actually, Rista, in there, I think Shane had actually done that. I think she had put, um, sales and service, and there was, uh, there was parentheses that said personal on there, if I recall, on the, on the application. I did, when, when I did it online, or I, maybe I can find this on here, I'm sorry, but I think what you're saying, I think is actually included, I think Shane had included that on there, where it was, where it was, uh, sales and service, and it was...
Oh, yeah, vehicle sales and service, comma, personal.
Comma, personal, yeah, exactly.
Which is, the definition for that is, "A facility for the sale or rental of automobiles, motorcycles, and pickup trucks and vans and accessories, therefore included, storage and incidental maintenance and repair and maintenance." So, it's, we're kind of going after the, and repair and maintenance. It's the maintenance piece that we're, we're looking at, it's not engine maintenance, we're not doing oil changes, it's just a different, different style.
Wax on, wax off when it's done.
Right, right.
Yeah, that requires a whole other layer of, of certifications and things like that, too. So, if they were to do that, they would, they would have to, they would have to apply for all sorts of things, the DMV, and, and they'd have to have like an ASE certified person, and all that, that's a completely different business. But from, from a zoning standpoint, that was the best that these gentlemen could come up with to fit into your pre, pre, uh, organized regulations.
I think we looked at it as it is a service to a vehicle, it's vehicle service, that's the one...
So, how would we, how would we limit it to that, to the detailing? What kind of language would we use to not rule a file?
So, I think you're gonna reference the, you're gonna reference the application, which I think the description says auto detailing on there, right?
Yeah, it does many...
It does, auto detailing, proposed use, auto detailing shop.
Yep.
But once they get the permit, it's not, the permit...
It says current use, auto repair shop.
Which, which is not accurate, 'cause that place has been closed for thirty years.
Yeah, the la, the last use, just, I do have some forensic knowledge of the building, so the last use was, uh, auto repairs, and the fellow who owned it, um, before, you know, I can't vouch whether they're doing this legitimately or not, but he, he is a, a major kinda car dealer, and they had cars in there, and they're working on motorcycles.
But I mean, it was decade, it was decades ago, and it was...
That I personally don't know.
Well, it was.
Yeah.
And it was before the current zoning reg, and it's really been vacant, I mean, it's not been, it's been vacant.
Those die motors.
There's been no use in decades.
Or storage, no, it is storage.
Storage, I think, yeah, but...
And that I, I can't vouch for.
Yeah, 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 so...
So, I think, I think, um, and we, and we can wordsmith it a little bit as we go, but, you know, you might wanna have a condition on there that's, that's something along the lines of no, uh, um, vehicle...
Mechanical repairs.
Mechanical, yeah.
That's all you wanna word.
Yeah, mechanical service.
No mechanical repairs allowed.
Yeah.
Or servicing.
Right, repairs or services, yeah.
Or sales.
And you can say that, too, that can be a separate, that can be a separate condition.
In a very broad view here, you get a car in there, this guy does a great take, great deal, great job detailing it, this thing is a showroom perfect now, and then wanting to sell it. Well, a client wanting to sell it, and wanted to leave it there so they could explain what they could do. I mean, it's not that they're going to sell it, they're gonna have a car there, they could possibly have a car there for sale by a, a client.
Does your client envision that?
I mean, anybody can potentially do anything, I guess this facility was not built for that, and I guess one of the things that would address that, you know, the building and the way it was done, and the, you know, the parking lot is very nice and it's, I guess I don't understand necessarily the concern for not doing that, because across the street, you have, it, it...
That's on Main Street, this is in a neighborhood.
Well...
Well, I know, I said, in, in respectfully, it's, it's, it's right before the bridge, before you have like a dirt bike, uh, type red line building, and then, and then now there's, there's...
But that's across the street, down the north side of Main Street.
I, I understand that, but it's, it's...
On Route forty-four, this is on a residential...
It's within eye shot, it's, I guess, like, my, my overall point is it's an eye shot, so, I'm not saying that they're, that they're doing this, 'cause they're not, and that's not on their business proposal, but in the event they did, I guess I don't necessarily disagree with the classification, as it's not very unusual. It's not like they're selling cars out of like a front lawn, or someplace like on Route forty-four where it requires someone to slam on the brakes. It's actually like, you know, in a, in a appropriately set, like, like, um, Willard said, if somebody were to do something like that, I don't think it would be grossly inappropriate for the area.
Well, and I guess my concern is not just not because I don't think it's, should be allowed or not allowed, I haven't even gotten that far, but just, you know, when we're giving an approval, I wanna make sure that it's setting the right expectations. If we approve something for sales and service, and say that no sales or service are allowed, except for, you know, it's not, I, I, that was just my only concern, to, you know, just making sure that we're reviewing it in a way, and approving it in a way that sets the expectation for what we expect it to be used for, and if there's growth or expansion, you know, come back and look, we're not saying yes or no to those things, but it's not proposed, I don't know, I don't know if that makes sense to them. But we're gonna say no sales or service allowed. It's not because we feel that this isn't right for sales or service, or maybe we do, maybe we don't, but that's, it's just because that's what the, that's the proposal.
Right.
So, we're, so we're making all these conditions to fit it into a, a use category that you may or may not even need to be applicable.
May I ask something, too, um, is that, in, in this gateway zone, it lists a lot of different types of unique businesses, to where I, I, you know, and I, I'm just kinda talking from what I feel, is that, you know, you have a, a big list of, of businesses that are allowed in that, in that area, like you have a brewery on that road, that's not on Route forty-four, there's a brewery, that has a very large parking lot, you have a restaurant, you have the entire road as manufacturing companies, a variety of really nice manufacturing companies, there's a, there was a cabinet shop there, there's all sorts of bear, there was a, a cotton place, I had no idea it was there, so there's a lot of very unique businesses on Meadow Street. So, I guess, you know, not to say that they're doing this, and that's like a, I guess a discussion amongst yourselves on the regulations, but, um, there's a, a very vast, you call it, what[1749.81] So I guess, you know, not to say that they're doing this, and that's like a, I guess a discussion amongst yourselves on the regulations, but, um, there's a, a very vast, uh, you call it, what is it, the gateway zone? That's dirt, that's very...
But the rest of Meadow Street is not gateway, that's all been rezoned to Town Center Residential.
Okay, I wasn't...
Only the gateway is that, that little speck, because that building had been there...
The brewery is in, is in residential area, and then all the manufacturing on that road is in residential.
That's on, that's on Main Street and Lake, uh, I can tell you in a minute, but the one on the other side of the street, the north of the...
Brewery off of Lake Street, the driveway's off of Lake Street.
Brewery's on Lake, yeah. And then, uh, Sun Shee property, that's Meadow Street.
I guess my point is that I, I could see like a major concern if this was in like a residential area, high concentration of houses and things like that.
It is, it is, if you look on the zoning map, that whole green strip is Town Center Residential, and you're right at the very tip of it, and only because at one time, that previous, I mean, back in, I think in the thirties, it was a Chevrolet dealership originally.
Yeah, it's in, and it's in the zone now.
But that's a hundred years ago, so, but it's in the zone, and we, when we changed the zones, there was a lot of contention about that. It's, it got through, but, um, it's kind of into the residential, Town Center Residential.
It's in the zone, and I, I guess that's just, like, you know, I...
The, uh, the brewery is in, um, the production and innovation zone on Lake and Meadow, on that side. The other side is Town Center Residential. So anyway, just, but I under, I appreciate your comment on that, and...
Yeah, I, you just, you know, I understand all concerns, nobody wants a, a Nissan dealer there, so I, 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 I understand like a volume of things, but I, I guess it, I, you know, that wasn't my intention, it was, it was mostly, we didn't have a category to fit it, and that's what was going on the suggestion.
Just a quick note on the zoning board as well, uh, at one of our site visits two weeks ago, we suggested a fence going to help buffer between the residential and the business.
Yes, and we, and they put that up already.
And it was up like the next day, so...
Yeah, yeah, no, and you know, and this, we have to think about it, not just from your perspective, yes, and that is what happens tomorrow.
That's just it.
And so that's...
People change their minds too, so...
Exactly, so that's how work they do.
Yeah, so I think however you have to word it with a condition, that might be kind of an internal thing, I can't tell you guys what to do, but...
Right.
But that's the best thing they could come up with for, to meet the needs of this particular business.
So we could change or limit what goes on there?
Yeah, you can, it's a special permit, yeah.
Alright, so, I wouldn't want to stop, um, some customer from selling a car at the detailing shop, because a detailer would be better able to represent the car. I wouldn't wanna see a commercial car sales there, which requires a DMV permit, but if he was selling an owner's car...
Can you say incidental sales, or does that make it murkier?
I think that you still get into the...
Yeah.
The licensing, and then we should have a display area.
Yeah, how can he sell any car there, from there?
Well, you could, you could.
Well, it'd be a private party sale between the customers.
Yeah.
Where the owner, the owner of the property is not involved with it, right?
Well, he would represent the car.
So the business wouldn't be selling the property?
No, and that's not their intention from anything I've gathered from them, and not paper.
Not, yeah, but if they need to sell one or two cars, after they clean it up, I mean...
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that's kinda like when the, uh, the shop down on Route eight hundred came in that does all the tuning on the cars.
Mm-hmm.
He said he might have a customer's car there a couple, three times a year to sell, and we approved that. But he's also getting a DMV license to...
Well, he had a dealer's and repair's license, so...
Yeah.
Right, so then I, and, and again, I'm not saying that I wouldn't approve a dealer's and repair's license on this, that's not what's being requested or asked of us. So we're gonna approve what's being requested, and we're gonna try to put all these conditions on this to fit them into what they're asking for, and, and maybe increase, take the conditions up later.
I mean, this is pretty much of a residential area down that end, until you go across the river, then it changes. But there's, there's houses on both sides of, you know, stuff, basically, uh, I mean, you done, the owner's done a lovely job on the building, it's an asset to the area. Being a detailing shop fits in, I don't know what it's gonna do upstairs, but...
No, I don't know either.
The detailing shop fits in good for, you know, not too intrusive and everything, in my viewpoint.
Yeah, and that I might add to, right now, it only has an occupancy of fourteen people for the upstairs. So if that were to ever change, they would have to do, they would have to, uh, add sprinklers and things like that, so, so it's not like that, that can like rapidly change, where there could be a hundred people in there, and a hundred cars, that's, that's not the case. It's set up for a very small amount of, of people, and I think, I, not to speculate on their, on their, um, how many people they'd have at one time, but I just think they're, they're limited to a smaller amount, a smaller crowds and things, it's, it's a lower impact, lower impact area. It's not like, it, it can't invite three hundred people, not that, I think that'd be very impractical, like a car wash, for example, there's no, there could be a line going down Route eight for all we know.
Mm-hmm.
So on their letter, it says upstairs waiting area for customers who wanna wait for their service.
Mm-hmm.
But they have a kitchen and...
Big screen TV.
Yeah, well, that's it, yeah.
Yeah.
So...
And that's, and that's just for the owners, I think it's, yeah, I think that's more...
But I mean, if you go, if you go to Zeller Tire and you sit there, they got all that stuff, you know, it's, it's pretty customary.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, yep. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So that's the cars for sale, and I, I don't see why he couldn't have one or two, if, if the private person came in and asked that he'd use his car.
Well, aren't, I mean, it sounds like there are state laws and DMV laws that...
If he was to sell, then if it was a customer's car, that the customer was going to be signing the documentation and all that.
If it helps him sustaining business, one or two, I don't think would hurt, it's a very nice building, he did a nice job on it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm saying...
For sure, no argument there.
I don't, I don't want the fact that we're saying no, no sales, I don't want that to limit him selling a customer's car that they just detailed back to brand new, and the customer says, hey, can you sell this for me now?
Yeah, it's very possible, I mean, I, and I think...
Well, it's probably, it, I see it as being very possible.
Yeah, it could happen, I mean, I guess that's the same as someone doing on their front lawn too.
Yeah, basically, private party sale, and you go to the detailing shop, and detailing shop says what you did with it.
Yeah, I, and, and just, and for future use, I'm not sure that that building is necessarily set up to be, um, I don't think you can logistically, you know, put a, a large car dealership there. It doesn't have, it would require, yeah, it would require a whole, uh, expansion ship.
Yeah, another, another, yeah.
Yeah, they'd have to, and I, and I...
But we had Gateway Auto right across this river there that had three or four cars at one time, and that was it, so...
But, so would you say no retail, it wouldn't be a retail sales place then? It'd be inc- it'd be incidental to, you know, a customer saying, so many, you know, it's not even, it's not even regulated then, if it's just a customer sale. You say, but we, but the, uh, the reg allows service and sales, so if we're saying we're only, we're limiting it to auto detailing with no vehicle servicing or maintenance, or retail sales?
Yeah, no retail sales or mechanical repairs of vehicles, period.
Retail sales of automobiles.
Retail sales of vehicles, alright.
Cause I think the key word there would be mechanical, and that would, and that's a big, that's where it would make a jump, comes in, if you're, if you're working mechanically on the...
But the private party sale, it can happen, it's just retail sales.
What if we just said a special permit for vehicle service auto detailing only? So then we're just not saying none of the, but we're just saying vehicle service auto detailing only.
You're saying it in the positive, yes.
But under vehicle service, it could be repairs, oil changes, tires.
Yes, right.
Vehicle service, auto detailing.
Auto detailing only.
Okay, yep, I understand, okay.
What do you think, that's a clean way to put it?
And then that one, we don't have all these negative conditions that can't be changed, you know?
I think that's okay. And, and if there's a business plan or some kind of a letter that explains the application, I would refer to that in, in the motion.
Vehicle service auto detailing only.
Well, if you say vehicle service, what per...
Well, that's the, that's the category we're put under, we're saying that it's a vehicle service. So if we're gonna go with that method, we have to say, um, per letter from Mad River Detailing, I know I'm starting...
Yep, ten, nine, twenty-five.
Ten, nine, twenty-five, but then it lists the services offered.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I kinda wondered that too.
Mm-hmm.
She doesn't fit, right? And I looked at the...
Yeah.
Talking about your Christmas party on the second floor there.
I, I, I see that, very good.
We're trying to find right, yeah. We're, we're, we're having the car wash versus service debate over here, but it's...
So, well, if we say service, auto detailing, and we reference this letter, it lists all the services.
I think that's the thing to do, that's right, because it's still, it is an auto service, it is a vehicle service, it is not what you would typically think of, right? You think of an auto service, your brakes, tires, you know, all that stuff, but it is a vehicle service, it's the same concept, you're bringing your car in, you're leaving it in a bay, somebody's doing work to it, and you're picking it up later in the day.
And it spelled out auto detailing, right.
Isn't it just a fancy car wash though?
Yeah, but because of our definition, I...
The, our definition's limited.
Yeah.
Our definition should include auto detailing.
So when we're doing these updates, we'll, we'll talk about that.
Mark it, mark that down, right.
Yeah, we'll put that in, but I think Rista's...
I mean, this is a lot of discussion, the guy just wants to make a nice building if you want to.
I know, we told, well, this shouldn't be too big of a deal, this should be a pretty easy hearing.
But, but he understands, I mean, we're really, we're really slicing it.
Yeah, no, and I, I think like one of that, and maybe I'm not remembering what you said, but with the, um, where the car wash, it had autom- automatic equipment.
Right.
Whereas this doesn't have automatic equipment, like you're not coming in, and it's doing much of things, like where this is more, this, uh...
Yes, it's hand, it's handwork, yes, of course.
Yeah, it's handwork, yeah, there's not, there's not big equipment, so people kinda...
Yeah, my, my stepson used to do that, so, yeah, years ago, so I, I, I know.
Yeah. But I, I think Rista's got the right idea, we have a business plan, it's part of the application, we refer to that letter or that statement, use the date, and, and that's, and that's what it is.
Yes, right. And say it's vehicle servicing, uh, auto detailing o- only.
Right, and, and any changes to that require a modification of the special permit, that's all. So if they wanna come in and do vehicle sales in five years, and they come in and they modify their special permit, that's all.
Everybody good?
Yep. Public.
Everybody good?
Yep.
Okay, anybody in the public that wants to speak to this issue? Seeing none.
Make a motion, close PZC twenty-five dash seventeen.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, so do we have draft motions?
We do, I'm gonna put them up on the screen so that we can, uh, apply, apply with them a little bit.
All, you guys all set with me?
Well, if you wanna hang out, we'll, we'll make a decision in a few minutes.
We're hanging tight.
Oh, you can sit, yeah, we've got, we've gotta go, go through the previous one first, and then yours will be next, so...
Okay, so we're off to new, uh, old business. PZ dash twenty-five dash sixteen, applicant Elizabeth Durham, location ninety-three Wetmore Avenue. Zone TSF proposal, special permit application for home occupation, section four-one-five dash four-five. Alright, any discussion?
You expect us to read that?
I, I can read it to you if you want, so the, the current motion states...
I can move, I can make it, I can make a motion to approve application twenty-five dash six, sixteen, special permit, applicant Elizabeth Durham, ninety-three Wetmore Avenue, special permit application for home occupation. One, in evaluating this application, planning and zoning commission has relied upon information provided by the applicant, and if such information subsequently proves to be false, deceptive, incomplete, and are inaccurate, this permit shall be modified, suspended, or revoked. Two, this application is consistent with the town's plan of conservation and development. Three, this application meets the criteria and standards of section four-one-five dash twenty-four D, special permits, special exceptions. Four, the business shall be operated in accordance with the modification shown in the letter from Elizabeth and Duane Durham, dated November twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
That number four is just me sitting over here as we were discussing, kinda...
Adding it in.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
So we can, let's go read them, I'll read them, buy whatever you want.
Okay.
I can read them.
Go ahead, read it.
You're gonna read the whole thing?
Nope, just some conditions, no cars or equipment to be parked on the lawn, on lawn area, no storage of pesticides or fertilizers or other landscape materials for business use on property, all maintenance of equipment to be conducted inside garage.
I didn't keep up with you, but I'll, I'll get it, I'll get it.
Yeah.
Somebody's got a second one.
Jeremy, on this draft motion, where it says special permit application for home occupation, we put lawn, lawn care business?
Second.
Uh, sure.
So it's clear?
And does this reference the letter made of...
Yeah, it does.
Yes, number four.
I seconded that, whoever's keeping track of that, so we can discuss it.
Number four was the letter, yeah.
Alright, any discussion?
Uh, well, I, I want those things in, oh, you wrote it down.
He's typing in it.
I'm literally, unless you talk, keeps going.
Oh, I see, I see, I got it, I, I got it.
He's describing. Jeff gets to sit there.
Okay.
I, I would ask, since we're doing this on the fly tonight, we don't have a paper version, that when we do the vote, just do it as a roll call, if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have the ability to print that off, or it can be signed by us tonight? Here?
Uh, I, no, I don't, but we can, I can get it to you for the next...
No, I didn't know if you wanted the signed version for the files.
Uh, we don't need it, I think that's why I wanna do it as a roll call vote, yeah.
Okay. So no further discussion?
So that landscaping materials, that landscaping stockpile materials, did you wanna add it in there?
Yes.
No storage of pesticides or...
Fertilizer or landscaping materials for business use. For business use in a property.
Stored on property.
Does that, does that cover it, Scott?
Yeah, it should.
What you're thinking, yeah.
You all set?
Good.
Alright, no further discussion? All in favor?
Oh, you gotta do a roll call.
Oh, you gotta do a roll call.
Yep, start with Jan, yes?
Yes.
You say your name.
Jan Perry, yes.
Peter Marshan, yes.
Lord Platt, yes.
Charlene Lavoy, yes.
Rista Malaka, yes.
You got it.
Yeah, you can, you can.
Good luck.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me, happy day to you.
Alright, under old business, B, PZ dash twenty-five dash seventeen, applicant Paul Mitchell, location one sixty-one Meadow Street. Zone TG proposal, special permit application for vehicle sales and service, personal auto detailing. And...
So I need the next motion.
Draft motion, make a motion, whatever, how we...
Do you want me to read, I can read it from here. I'll read it. Motion to approve application twenty-five dash seventeen, special permit, applicant Paul Mitchell, address one sixty-one Meadow Street. Proposal, special permit application for vehicle sales and service, personal auto detailing. One, in evaluating this application, planning and zoning commission has relied upon information provided by the applicant, and if such information subsequently proves to be false, deceptive, incomplete, and are inaccurate, this permit shall be modified, suspended, or revoked. Two, this application is consistent with the town's plan of conservation and development. Three, this application meets the criteria and standards of section four fifteen dash twenty-four D, special permits, special exceptions.
And that, having the auto detailing there limited to what we were just discussing?
Yeah.
Well, where is that gonna be said?
So I think...
Well, it says special permit for vehicle and service, personal auto detailing.
Well, so, can we change the application for vehicle service? Get rid of sales?
Right.
Sales should be removed.
Well, well, that's the provision under the, the regs that you're, that it's being considered, correct?
And it should be a condition at the bottom.
Right.
The way Rista...
Should be number four.
Right.
Alright, so, be, approve for vehicle service...
Servicing, service, servicing, vehicle servicing?
Service, that's what the use is, right?
How about approve for auto detailing?
It only says auto detailing shop, shop, oh, in there.
So vehicle service, auto detailing only, services detailed in letter dated ten-nine-twenty-five from Mad River Detailing.
Right, it's detailed. Got it, yeah. October ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Did we get a second on that?
Second.
Okay.
We'll do a roll call on this one too, please.
Mm-hmm.
No, we're good.
So, any further discussion on this? You're all good with this? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Jan Perry, yes.
Peter Marshan, yes.
Lord Platt, yes.
Charlene Lavoy, yes.
Rista Malaka, yes.
Good luck.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you, it looks nice.
When's the grand opening?
Uh, you'll have to ask them, I think, I'll, I'll ask them, and I think coming soon, I think fourteen people can go though.
I know, right?
Wait a minute, is that for the fire marshal?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll do it in shifts.
I'll have to talk to them, it needs to be modified.
Take care.
Thanks a lot.
Okay. Now we're on to number six, new business, PZC dash twenty-five dash eighteen, applicant Geraldine Anne Bowen, location twenty-four Center Street. Zone TC, propose application for special permit for mixed-use building. We're just receiving this tonight?
Yep, we're seeing, accepting schedule here.
So, kind of, well, do you want to...
We're only accepting the application tonight, Anne.
Yeah, yeah, but I know whether it's clear, Shane's gonna show up.
So, and it'd be quick.
Not.
Your portion.
Yeah, he meant your part, but...
So be it seven, it'll be on twenty minutes.
So it's, it's currently, um, it's, so, Rista asked for clarification, so that the application is to take essentially four, right?
Yes, so the building, when I bought it in, I can't remember, like, two thousand two, like, twenty-some years ago, it was four units, it was all residential. At that time, my business, uh, bone agency, insurance agency, was in Torrington, I wanted to move it to Winstead. So I came and changed the building, again, not knowing what I was doing, to commercial, because I was gonna be running the agency out of it. For a number of years off and on, the upstairs, so it's still four chunks, the downstairs is still, um, my husband's business and the agency. The upstairs, for a while, I did have CPAs that were up there that rented it, so it was used commercially, haven't had anybody up there for ages, and there really isn't any need, um, for a small, yeah, for a small, for a small business, but I...
Yeah, you wanna go back to apartment, it's a, it's a house, it's a beautiful house.
It's a house, but I, but to make it mixed use, so that the two upstairs units could be made, uh, just small, just very warm, small apartments. At this point, probably would only, um, uh, be renting out the one above the agency on the twenty-sixth side, and I think tomorrow morning, fire marshal...
Oh, they're not tomorrow.
They're coming tomorrow morning, they, they answered my husband, because I can't be there. Um, but it's basically set up as, I mean, there were CPA, so it's got a, like, kitchenette, stove, refrigerator, it's basically set up as apartment. The original building still ha- has two, so it's got front stairs and has its own, each of, each of the four.
We'll go, we'll go over all this during the public hearing.
Yeah, have the four stairs.
I mean, it fits into the plan for back there.
It does, it's, it's town center zone, it's, it's allowed, it's a, yeah, I mean, it's, it's actually going to a use that we will be switching from special permit to site plan per the discussion at our last meeting, so.
I'll make a motion to... Yeah.
Accept.
Schedule, schedule.
Accept the application from Gerald, uh, PZC twenty-five dash eighteen, and have a public hearing scheduled for December eighth at seven PM here in Town Hall.
Second.
Can you just, December eighth?
December eighth, excuse me.
Between fifteen days, between now and December eighth.
That's our first meeting?
It is, I just want to make sure the timeline works.
Is it fifteen, eight?
No.
No, it's not, so, so go, yeah, go to the second meeting in Dec- in December, which I know is Christmas.
She had, yeah, she, um, Shane said it was twenty-second.
Okay, so...
Twenty-second, yeah.
We'll move it to the twenty-second, I'll change my motion to the twenty-second.
Notification.
I'll second it.
Okay.
And then she said she would help me with the notification, the letters, all that stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
The notification, I forgot about that, yes.
All in favor? On this?
Mm-hmm.
See you then, Anne.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item B, PZC dash twenty-five dash sixteen, Clifford Treveland, location eighty-five, eight ninety-eight and nine twenty Main Street. Zone TG, site plan application for a restaurant and retail small shop. Actually, we're just accepting you, so you really have to say two words.
Well, it's fun to watch, anyway. This is, this is a site plan, so you could act on it tonight if you want to, I mean, I think it's worth having the conversation.
Well, isn't that also part of, uh, they're doing some, um, boundary line adjustment in that?
They are, but then you don't have to act on that part of it, that's a, the boundary, boundary line adjustment of the staff.
Is there anything needed with wetlands on this, because that borders the brook, everything they're looking at?
It will need, um, well, there's, there's...
Well, I don't think we should take any action on it till the wetlands approval.
So it's kind of like for future UTS, that will not have an effect to...
Not even, they're looking where the stage and, and around the building, that's within wetlands areas?
Correct, that's all future stuff, yeah, right. Yep.
So we're not, we're not gonna deal with the patio, and the whole rest of the brook or anything?
No, that's future.
That's what?
Future, that'll be a modification later. It is, and I think I called it out in my staff report, that, you know, we, we asked the applicant to put everything on the plan, so that the commission is aware of kind of the direction that he wants to go with this operation. But there are certain things that are called out on the plan as future, and so in any approval, I think what we'd want to do is reference those future items and say that he needs to come back for modification to his approval for those things. But we wanted to give you the, the, the overall concept.
So, what's your time for opening?
It's free.
So, my question is...
Is this Molly's?
Molly Quinn's?
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the same.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So...
I'm just locating it.
Yeah, and then it was a Red Rooster after that.
Yeah, oh, right, well, I go way back, right.
It used to be farm stand, and the tapas replay.
I saw you smile. I know, me too.
We all have been there, most of us.
When do you plan to go to, um, well, the future uses a plan for spring opening?
It would be, what, no, 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 it would be like a year, two years down the road, this is all just future things that I might want to do. So, like, initially, just opening, uh, it's a roadside, outside eatery type thing, just getting that open, down the road would be, uh, putting a footbridge across the property, and then possibly a pavilion, these are all just like, what type?
Is that this?
No, that's part of the landscaping on the, that would be the greener, you'd see a...
I just see a bridge there.
Yeah, my wife, yeah, she drew that part, I'm sorry.
So, where it says proposed white stone gravel outdoor seating in the dining area, that's future?
No, that, that, that would be the spring.
Part of what we're approving?
Yeah, that would be, and it's all disturbed area now, it's all sort of compact, no, uh, I don't know, the stage coming...
That's the stage?
The stage is on the inside of the fence.
It does say, it does say that, but it's also on the...
It's on the handprint, but...
I would go based on the handprint, that was just to kind of give you an idea of the...
No, I understand, I'm just saying.
Timeline of your stage.
Oh, timeline, yeah, that would be in the spring, but as of right now, it's also on the interior of the fence line, that's already existing there.
Right. I, I mean, I, I think we should have, at least have some dimensions sizes of that stage, and, and something for...
Well, the proposed entertainment area, are you making it a natural stage, or you just have a...
Yeah, it would, it would be like a, it wouldn't be a permanent structure, it would be just like a temporary type of structure that we could actually move, it may be something, you know, as big as this carpet right here, you know, if you just want to have somebody planning it.
Yeah, because that, that's not a problem, I mean, that's in our regulations, that's, that's an approval thing, I'm just concerned about the stage size and, and location, and that.
I wouldn't be that big, it would be relatively small.
Probably scaling to about ten by ten on that plan, I would say, just, just...
I didn't give them a specific size, so that's probably why we have that.
I, I definitely do.
You brought your ruler with you?
Yep, she did. Yep, there it is.
She, she's a planner.
I know, no kidding.
I have a six-inch guy that I travel with, too.
Your pocket ruler.
So, it's showing up, yeah, ten by ten.
So if we've proved it for a maximum size of twelve by twelve, we do. That's what I'm saying, I just sort of, we do some type of the size, the maximum, we give them some leeway.
So you're saying that the patio, this whole area is disturbed, and that doesn't need a wetlands permit, or you're gonna prove it as an agent, or something along those lines?
Well, it is already disturbed, it's basically, it's all gravel, parking area now, I think it's just gonna be a nicer looking parking area situation, but it could certainly be an agent determination.
I was just gonna say, that'd probably be agent determination, because they're not disturbing anything near the brook, where you'd need to go to wetlands, but, until you start going across the brook.
Right, so the stage, the structure, whatever it becomes, would be the, the primary thing that would need a permit, and that could be, and it would, probably would be held as an agent, yeah.
And there's nothing, there's nothing way back here, this proposed pavilion.
No, that's for future.
If, if I made it like the stage, proposed area there, is further away from the river than that grass area that's already there existing, so...
Yeah.
Well, so, anything within, what, a hundred feet of the river is regulated by the wetlands commission, and we...
Structure?
Yeah, to that, and avoid any disturbance.
Any disturbance, okay.
So, we can't prove it for the wetland commission to prove this, so that's why we're asking those questions, but if Jeff is telling us that he can do an agent determination, and it's going to do, or maybe already has, um, done an agent determination on, on this, then we can approve it tonight. If we have to wait for that wetlands approval, we wouldn't be able to approve it tonight, that's why we're just asking those questions, so I think if...
Well, it has not been approved yet, uh, so we would need to...
You mean by you?
By me, right, it would need to, the application would need to come in, and you just, you might, might quick check, I mean, I'm familiar with the project, we've met multiple times, I have no concerns, from that standpoint, yeah. It's all disturbed, yeah, it's all, it's basically all impervious surface now, anyway.
So, the way...
And this use is, is almost exactly what was there, you know, you know, so...
Yeah, for the most part, yeah.
Jeremy, do you have any type of, of, an approval drawn up yet, or not?
Uh, no, I don't think we do.
Okay, 'cause I, not, so, you know, we could do it as a conditional approval pending wetlands...
Yeah, you could.
Determination.
Yeah, absolutely, you could, yep.
Something like that.
Yep.
You just have to come in and submit a wetlands application, that would be the approval of it.
Okay. Or, I mean, the other option, Peter, is you could, you could have that happen, and continue it two weeks to your next meeting, and then we can type up a, we can have a draft motion for you ready that, if you want to do it that way.
Yeah, that would probably be better.
So where's it gonna go?
I don't know if that throws you off, but...
Jeff's gonna do it, as agent.
You're gonna do an agent determination of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, based on this level of non-disturbance on a previously disturbed area.
So, this is gonna be a, a stage, um, that's like a ground-based deck, non-mounted or something?
Well, he said it was portable, it's just, it's not gonna be attached, you're not...
Yeah, well, it's a boarding type thing that we can take it back in, anytime, recover, yeah, exactly.
You know, putting pilings in, and that, yeah.
So, that's really, not much, uh...
Yeah, it's not gonna be a fixed structure, so everybody's saying, no.
So you're saying we should...
Should approve the site plan, and...
You can, you can go one of two ways, we don't have a draft motion for it typed up, so if you want a draft motion to work off from, then I would suggest continuing this to your next meeting on December eighth, or whatever the day is.
Eighth is our first meeting.
We'll get you a typed up motion, Grif can come in and do the agent approval with Jeff, so that that part of it's done, you don't have to worry about the condition, and then...
Yeah, I think that would be, that'd be cleaner and cleaner for everyone, really.
I think that's fine.
Okay.
You good with that?
So I'll make a motion, we...
No, no, no public hearing, no.
I'll make a motion that we continue PZC twenty-five nineteen to December, our December eighth meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, we'll see the eight.
All right, appreciate it, thank you.
When's it, when's it opening?
Uh, when you get back from Florida.
I need to get out.
When you get back from Florida, it's actually gonna be a really cool vibe, everything, in the, the spring, early spring, so, hopefully, what it, it's gonna be weather dictators, so, we'll have it all figured out, so...
Yeah, yeah. What's, what's the name of it?
Uh, skipper's after my late father.
Yep.
Of course.
Cool.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yep, doing well.
All right, I'm great, yeah.
Take care.
Okay, now we're on to number seven, other business, twenty, twenty-six meeting schedule.
Should have a copy of it there in your packet, I think.
Yeah, somewhere, probably safe here.
Sticking with the same schedule, um, second and fourth Mondays, the three holidays that exist on Mondays, we're just proposing no meetings on those, so it's a memorial thing.
I'll make a motion, we accept the twenty-twenty-six meeting schedule calendar for planning and zoning commission.
I'll second it. All in favor? Aye. And then there was...
I have a question, don't we only usually meet once, is it July or August, do we meet twice both those months?
Yeah.
There's only one in July?
Yeah.
And one in August?
There's only one in July.
One in September?
Oh, there's two.
No, there's two, there's two in July.
Oh, yes, okay, that's true, it's in July.
Okay, two calls, yeah.
I thought it was our first meeting, but, okay.
You, you get, you get December off, because I figured you probably didn't want to have a meeting between Christmas Day and New Year's Day, so we didn't...
No.
That's the best time.
Okay, then, item B, affordable housing count.
So this was a conversation that the chairman and I had last week, I think it was last week, and he asked what our affordable housing units were, or what, what our account was. In my staff report, I referenced that, each year, the Department of Housing publishes the Affordable Housing Appeals list, and that's where your percentage that's tied to the eight-thirty G statute comes from, so right now, Winchester's sitting at nine point seven-seven percent affordable, uh, consisting of two hundred and sixty-nine government-assisted units, so those are HUD-assisted units, like the Housing Authority operates, those types of units. Tenant rental assistance, there's a hundred and thirty-seven of those, so those are section eight vouchers primarily, um, and then CHAF and USDA mortgages, there's a hundred and twenty-two of those. You don't have any deed-restricted units, uh, as of right now, so, um, you know, the CHAF and USDA mortgages, of course, could disappear, that number could go down, um, but it looks like you've been pretty consistent right around that nine and a half percent mark, what I...
The past years, we've been right around ten percent, or a little less.
Except that year, we were at like between twelve and thirteen percent.
Yeah, so you prob- that was probably a lot of CHAF and USDA.
Yeah, I think that was when Nanny Drive and that area was under that, um, and none of these include stuff that we approved, like the hospital project or the bachelor school project, so they don't include anything that's been approved.
They do not, because they don't get counted until, yeah, once CO gets in.
So in reality, if those are built, or when they're built, this number could rise.
It'll bump up our number, yeah.
Yeah, yep.
Up, yes.
Yep.
So we're, we're sitting pretty good.
You are, you are.
Really, compared to other towns and cities.
Yep.
Okay, item C, update to zoning regulation.
Just wanted to keep it on the agenda, I don't have any language for you to look at tonight, it's mostly prepared, and I'll have it for you on the eighth, so that we can have a real conversation. Um, I'm also gonna go through the housing bill that was recently passed, I don't think the governor's actually signed it yet, has he, no?
No.
But, yeah, but we have a public act number as of today, uh, it's twenty-five dash one, so, um, by then, maybe it'll have the governor's signature, I'm not sure, he says he's gonna sign it, so I'll go through that, and, um, any changes, the regs that are gonna be required quickly before it does, a lot of it comes into effect July first, so we want to make sure that we incorporate most of that stuff. Some of those things you already are doing, um, you know, we're talking about making, uh, mixed uses on Main Street, um, a site plan used versus special permit, that's one of the things that the, that the legislation talks about, so we'll, I, I'll run through that and, and make sure that we're, we're okay. Parking is one of the things that we'll have to look at, you already don't require off-street parking in town center, so we're good there, that, I don't think we're gonna need to make a lot of changes for this time.
Now, I, from what, some gist of it, I'd read.
Yeah, it's gonna be pretty minimal impact.
Did, uh, you get the one I sent you for the subdivision for the cisterns?
Yeah, I ordered it. Yes, yes, and we'll put that in there, too, I, I looked at John's, I think that's great.
Yeah, 'cause John, well, John and I went through the whole thing, and he, coming from Torrington, he's used to ordinances, and I explained to him, no, it's gonna be a regulation, and, um, it's easier for us to do that than going through an ordinance, for us, but it's, it's short and, and sweet, so, it should be something that we can easily do, so...
I thought the language was great, yeah. Yep. We'll have that, I, my goal is, for, for some of the, I'll call them low-hanging fruit items that we talked about a couple of weeks ago, what I'd like to do is get them in front of you next, next meeting, two weeks from now, have a conversation, make sure that we're content with the language, and then maybe get them scheduled for a public hearing in, in early January, yeah, get some of these things done.
Public hearing.
Yeah, and if you could, uh, mixed use structural as a site plan, I know there's a couple projects coming up, but that would really be very helpful.
Yeah. That's one of the low-hanging fruit ones that I, that I'm thinking, yeah, 'cause, I mean, I, it was, it seemed like a consensus that everybody wanted that.
Okay, sounds good.
So, I have a question, back when we did the codification of zoning regulations, we were all told we were gonna get a new updated zoning manual?
And maps.
And maps.
And maps.
Didn't we give you maps?
I don't know, I'm just...
Didn't we, I think we printed out and gave you maps.
You mean these? These?
No, that's the wrong color, so that's not it.
Okay, that's one I've been looking at.
I don't remember the one with the new colors, I, I remember them on the screens, we looked at it and talked about them.
Is that it?
Rista's got hers, so I don't know where yours is, Peter.
Okay. Probably in my briefcase. I'll have to get through it.
Gotta go through the paperwork, I'm trying.
I, I think that, you know, internally, we talked about...
I don't know if this is the most updated one, let me see.
We talked about, um, you know, printing out, and I think...
I thought that was part of the, the deal with the, the codification, because she told us, once we approved it, we would get new...
Some... So, the, uh, part of the contract is they, they provided us with two paper copies, and, uh, I forget... So, the, uh, part of the contract is they, they provided us with two paper copies, and I forget the exact cost, but quite a premium, uh, so much so that I reached back out to make sure that we, no longer, we're going to get paper copies from them. It was like thirteen hundred bucks or something for the two, exactly.
Yeah, it's a lot.
So, that printing will be done in-house, um, if, if you're dead set, that you want paper copies.
No, I just remember them saying that we were gonna get them.
Yeah.
And I thought everybody, everybody was gonna get one.
No, just two, one in the clerk's office and one in the department.
Okay, and I just wa, was wondering where they were.
Yeah.
Even if you emailed me, I would, I would print it.
I know, at one time it was put off because we were updating the zoning regulations, so they weren't gonna be printed, and it just came across that each individual member was gonna get one.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I like a paper copy, it's good to work with at the meetings and stuff.
Yeah.
'Cause it's tough.
Quick show of hands, everyone want a paper copy?
Well, it, it sits, right?
Can, can we, can we?
Is it this?
Can we wait to give you the paper copy until after this next round of changes that we're gonna make, which is gonna be pretty, well, hopefully.
Which will be when? February first, I want a printed, paper copy.
Well.
Of the regs?
Of the new regs.
All right, but it might not, might not have everything in it, that's the issue.
Okay, we'll give you March first.
All right.
'Cause we were talking this in July.
I know, but, but we've made a bunch of changes since then.
And now we've gone almost another year, I'm not waiting another year for it.
I know.
Well, I think, I think the, the, um, things, I mean, and when we're sitting here.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you can.
Regulations are five years old.
And if I had an iPad that was available, we could scroll through.
That's really what we need.
We can talk about that.
But short of that, a, a paper copy would work for us, but I think, I think as a position, we need access to, um.
iPad?
Information.
To, to the regulations that are.
Jenny's gotta do, have classes for us.
Applications.
That's the easy part.
I know.
It's the money to pay for them, that's the hard part. We were, we were having an internal discussion today too, about, I mean, with all the technology that they've set up in here, it's just another little step to get screens on the dais for you all too, rather than craning your neck looking at the big screen, trying to read, but.
Just, the distance is difficult to see without seeing it, behind it.
I know, I know.
Yeah, like, he could read this and.
I can read it with my glasses, but without them, forget it.
Right.
But the other two, no, so.
All right, well, we'll, we'll get you printed copies. I will put a reminder in my calendar that the drop dead date is three one twenty-six, regardless of where we stand in the updates.
Well, yeah.
So if they're gonna be printed in-house?
Yep.
Or are you gonna go to like Staples or Goulet or something?
Well, but I have a, but I have a question for you.
We might go to Goulet, might go to in-house, yeah.
We're gonna make these updates, when do you think you're gonna have them, uh?
Well, they, I, generally speaking, I get them into general code either the next day or a couple days later, and then whatever your effective date is, and then they update quarterly, so they roll it into the, they roll it into the, the codified reg quarterly. But don't forget that there's a section that says recently updated.
But what it says, so January, February, March, so it won't be updated until, like, April.
Well, that's what I was getting at, but Peter said he wanted his by March first, so.
Well, if they're gonna tell me they'll have it ready for April, I'll delay it till April.
But, I guess, I guess my point would be.
But, not them anymore.
I mean, I know it's paper, but it's not all that much paper, to print them out, and then as we change regulations.
Swap the sections.
Swap the sections, and then, in April or May or June when we're done, we'll just get a new section.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we change things after that, we can just change this page here and there.
Because the section numbers don't match what we have now, nothing's, you know, these are still, these are from twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, those, yeah, you're right, all right.
So if we got new sections, and then as we move along, and then in the second quarter when they're all updated, just.
Yeah, okay.
If that's not.
So why don't we, why don't we hold off on printing until the, the next batch of changes is made, and then we'll print everything?
But the next batch won't be in.
But, no, but, but what I'm saying is, we could, we could, we could print off everything, including the changes that we make, hopefully in January, get all that to you.
That should give them enough time by April first, so that they can have the codified.
Right, right.
And act you, so you're printing.
Yeah, okay.
We don't have much coming up, it's coming down to ours, so it's not.
No, correct, okay, all right, we'll work on that.
'Cause I mean, like, what we're talking about with the subdivision regulations, all we need to do is just those two pages, they're, it's two pages, you know, that's just to add to it.
Yeah, that's really light. Yeah.
All right, item eight, approval of minutes, I make a motion to approve the November tenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then communications, I see we have our new selectman.
Yep, welcome.
Liaison here, would you like to say anything to us, or?
It's a pleasure to be here, and, uh, thank you for everything, and I am assigned as the lia- liaison for this committee, so I'll be here most of the time.
Well, we're glad to have, glad to have you, thank you.
Thank you. No communications from, okay, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not bad.
Eight thirty-five, eight thirty.
Good.
Nice going.
Did pretty good.
Good job, everybody.
Okay, let's see.
Who's second with minutes approval?
I do.
Pete.
Little minute, aye.
I told Shane, I said, thank you for unpackaging this again, 'cause she, she had packaged it, so she's gonna return to Amazon. I came in here, it's like, ah, can I get that little extension, no, I packed, I packed it up, I packed it up, I said, okay, don't worry about it, and then I came in and it was. Yeah. Tell her, I said, thank you, I'm repackaging it. Yes, have a Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yep, you're on.